I mean bedside tables, a few things we've got to go and look at. All the big furniture, yes.
Are you moving?
We're going to be marketing our condo. I've already moved into Perry Drive.
Oh wow.
Yeah.
Is there any other plan?
Oh, no, we want it.
Our five-year plan turned into a six-year plan, eleven-year plan. We're going to sell it and buy it. So we are looking around town.
Did you see one just went up and stopped there?
It did, yeah. It did.
There's also one in his club called Crossroad.
Yeah, the forgets house there?
Yes.
Oh, that was a four-year.
Which house is it?
Four days. It's like it's way beyond.
It is.
Yeah, it's got seven digits.
An million dollars apparently.
I don't know how many more beyond seven dollars from one million, but it's one.
One point two maybe from one million.
They've gone down twice. I don't know what they were assessing at.
Okay. Is that campus?
Is this a place?
It's gone. I figured I have to turn it on real soon so it can get here.
We can almost get it on.
We need a remote.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I wonder if such a thing exists for that.
I don't know.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Yes, it does. Yeah.
I don't know how old the camera is.
That's a fairly new one. It's bought this summer. It's an eight hundred, isn't it?
I don't know.
Because mine's an eight. I figured we have to turn it back in three minutes. Is someone there that we didn't approve?
We approved two sets last week.
What?
We approved two sets last week.
Oh, you did two sets last week.
The only one we didn't do is the fourth, I believe. Because I wasn't here for the last one.
Swiss chocolate. It's Lindt, but this is Lindt manufactured in Switzerland.
Not Stradler.
Not Stradler. All right, it is now six thirty and I would call to order the Select Ward Meeting July 2nd, 2018. My goodness, it's July already. All right, so let's see. Approval of minutes, we, oh, we have something before I left on vacation, June 4th and then last week. So I didn't have any problem with June 4th. I don't know who else was, were all there?
I was there, I didn't have a problem with that.
Okay, so those are good. And last week, is that June 25th? Are you two good with what the minutes were for last week? All right, so by consensus, Salma, we're good with all of those minutes. Is there any community input? There's a couple of folks out there.
I'd like to.
Yeah, come on, please, come on up. Just let us know your name and your address.
My name is Adrian O'Clery, five forty Wrongville. I'd like to find out what is, when you go to a recycle bin, that they'll try and transfer station over here. If you put something in the demo, how much can you put in there before you get charged? I put four pieces and I get charged ten bucks. That was the second time. The first time I only put about five pieces and I get charged ten bucks. In other words, I got paid twenty dollars for just showing about, maybe the most is ten pieces. It wasn't even a truck pickup truck.
I don't have the copy of the transfer ordinance in front of me.
And I know what I told him and I says, if you're charging me ten bucks just for four pieces, if you're not satisfied, he was sarcastic to me, he says, if you're not satisfied, go see a selector. He doesn't want me here.
That's, so you can yell at us. See, that's why we're here, right?
That's why I'm here.
So we'll see, we'll see what the, what the ordinance says. And I don't remember off the top, have a seat and have a Swiss chocolate, please.
O'Clery, Adrian O'Clery. Five forty Wrongville. And could they sign their name on their, under the signature? We can, for instance, now that if we have a complaint or something, we can be able to.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
There's no signature, so I can't help who or what.
George, is that something you can?
I thought they were supposed to be on there.
Pardon?
I thought they were supposed to be on there.
Yeah, there is no signature. Is that what you could they remind the folks about? It's a separate.
I can pull it up on my phone. I don't have a, print it, I didn't print that one.
It's a small pickup, large pickup. There's something wrong here.
So what do you mean pickup?
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah, so we'll see, we'll see what it says.
It says, I'm back of a trail and I had all my trash to put in a concave, all my metal to put in.
They have some.
And I had the, we cleaned enough, yeah. I had the first, this is the first time I had two doors, a screen door. Then I had a metal cabinet to have a corbeau. And I said, you charge me, you gotta pay fifteen, ten dollars for that. I said, well, maybe a receipt. And when I went back the second time, the other guy was updating, had a pickup truck and all it was was my trash that I was going to put in that dumpster. And I had two set of skis. And I was also saying, two pair, because one you four pieces. He come right up to me, he said, you know, he said, they cost money if you put that in there. I said, well, then you got four pieces. He said, well, he said, if you're not satisfied, he says, go see your selector. So I said, okay, well.
Construction and demolition, so minimum fee is five dollars.
So right away.
Small pickup, unless, this is, unless it's been updated since 2017.
No, this is, this is it, I'm looking at it as well.
Minimum fee is five dollars, small pickup or trailer is twenty dollars. Full-size pickup, six-foot trailer is thirty-five dollars. Full-size pickup, eight-feet trailer, or eight-foot trailer is forty-five dollars. And a one-ton dump truck is sixty dollars. So Mr. O'Clery, it sounds like you were at least charged over five dollars. It should have been just five dollars, not ten. So sorry about that.
Yeah, I took twenty dollars and all that was charged, twice on there was charged, ten dollars a piece.
So it looks like it should have been five dollars, right?
That's true. Fifteen dollars, fifteen dollars back, right?
None, five dollars for each.
Okay, okay, I'll agree.
It says minimum fee, five dollars.
All right, I'll leave you ten bucks.
Can I ask a question? You said you had a metal cabinet?
Well, it's a corbeau, it's a glass and everything.
Oh, okay, so that one had gone in the metal, huh?
No.
Where does that go?
All right, so, shall we agree to?
Well, we owe Mr. O'Clery ten dollars.
Refund? So we'll, we'll have Caroline take care of that. We'll let her know that we're refunding you ten dollars. Thank you for coming to see us.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, like I said, it would be a good idea if they signed their names so if we do come for a complaint or something.
Absolutely, so, so our road agent has taken note of that. And do they have the fee schedule? Is it pretty obvious that right there?
That should not even be a question.
Yeah, yeah, well, things, you know, sometimes, I'm not going to make excuses for any things happen. The important thing is that we set it right. So we'll set it right, we'll give you back ten bucks. And Caroline will either be, do we have a phone we can call you at?
I don't need to, she can call me.
Here, why don't you write it down so it's not publicly available to everybody? All right, thank you so much. You sure I can't interest you in a Swiss chocolate? There we go, there we go.
Thank you very much. I want to keep them seated.
Oh, you should keep them.
Keep them just in case.
Just in case we need to refer them again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sorry I should come down for it, but.
Well, I, when you told me that, you said, if you're not satisfied, go see a selector.
That's what we're here for.
That is what we're here for, but I, I think George will remind them of the fee schedule and have them sign their name on the receipt, so that's good to find out too. So appreciate your taking the time to come to come to us.
I appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Do you want to stay if I can?
No, you can go.
You are free to go.
You can stay if you want.
I will have to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
It's actually in the Minutes Conservation Commission. I applied for the alternate position on. If you want, if you want to wait, it's up to you.
We can take it.
I know it's in the minutes on the paper right now, Conservation Commission.
It's wait on the bottom, so.
I don't, did somebody, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
My name is Bruce York. I sent a letter, email, asking to be appointed to the alternate position that's vacant on Conservation Commission.
Okay, okay, thank you. Have, do you send us an email or a letter?
I sent an email, yes.
I haven't, I haven't worked in.
Well, Mr. York, why don't you come up just if you don't mind?
You have a chat.
I know who you are, I don't think Mr. York knows who you are, so.
I do now. Nice to meet you.
You explain where you live and.
Please have a Swiss chocolate.
And what you do, so.
Well, on my email, I also stated that I'm a member of the Tri-C Trail Blazers, which means I'm out in the woods quite a bit. And I'm also the one who has been responsible for Scottland being conditioned it's in right now. So I'm out in the woods, numerous places in the woods, seeing different things. I was approached a few months ago about it and I debated about it. There's still an alternate position available. And I thought it might be something that I could give some info where I'm out there seeing things all the time. Because I'm out there at least once a week, different parts of the trail. All through Scottland, back of Heritage Drive, over to Trigid's Way, through the fields and over to Powell Line Stuts, went with that list and Ball Mac. So I'm out numerous places in the town with ample knowledge of what's out there in the woods.
So Mr. York lives on How.
Howard Road, yes.
Which is, you know.
It's the one off Sowsworth?
Yeah, right off of Cracus Crossing.
Yeah, so you're close to.
Allowed, was part of the club, but had allowed the club to use part of his land.
Oh, there's many of them.
The trail actually goes across.
He maintains, he maintains that and has, even before, I think, long before any of us were on the board, maintained that end of Scottland and kept it accessible, so.
Yeah, I've been for at least more than two years, been keeping Scottland as the trail's clear the way they are right now.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate it.
I know we had been here when there was the question whether we were allowed in Scottland. And I was here for that.
Oh, we, yeah, we had a lot of community input. And I think we arrived at someplace that.
Yeah, rescinded whatever was there that was hanging on the post and allowed us to go in there and take care of the trails. Any major changes, we have to come before the board for any changes.
Well, does the board have?
Yeah, I have the same, I got it good for us. I mean, definitely it's probably of experience.
Mr. York brings a different set of experiences from some of the other folks who are appointed. And has a familiarity with part of the conservation land that comes from a different perspective, so I think it's helpful.
Yes, so I don't entertain a notion to appoint Mr. York.
So appoint Mr. York as an alternate to the Conservation Commission as far as a year appointment, is that what we do?
Yes, till next, till next March, not a year. It's until.
It would have been if we'd done that.
Okay.
All right, any comments or questions, call us if they would say aye.
Aye.
So congratulations. Thank you for coming forward. Can I, can I raise something with you? The, Sonny, Rayvermet.
Yes.
You know his property? I believe that certainly at least when that extreme race went through, they were on his property. So it's, I wondered if maybe the trail is on his property and shouldn't be.
There is a trail, there is a trail that's really close to, behind his house, that's off of the old railroad bed, right after his driveway. It's kind of, yes, we use it, but yeah, he doesn't. Most of the people do not use it. They usually stay on the old railroad bed and go up further and take the loop tickles down through towards the river, which I'm trying to figure the two ends, I'll get them back together and I'm working on post signs, no more rice vehicles on the river trail itself. So that I'll be open to just bikes, long bikes or foot. It was there after they logged out, the trail got wiped out, we gotta try to figure out where it was and get it back in there. And that will be taken care of, it's, it's in the works.
Okay, great, so I just wanted to let you know that there, he usually, I think he particularly has had some issues with that extreme race because they.
The race not necessarily of the ATV.
Because they pounded signs on his trees and, you know, got other kinds of things. But it would be, I think it would be clearer to, we could make sure that the trail is, or that he gives permission, one or the other.
Yeah, I've got the name of the guy that was in charge of it. We heard one or two other complaints and he has been informed about the problems. So hopefully next year, that won't happen.
Have you been over towards your end, on the old Indigo Hill, on Indigo Hill Road, end of the trail where the house that? Now there's a new fence? Have you been down there?
Our trail comes out on the old railroad bed, right, right there.
Right, have you had a chance to go back there? I haven't been over there since the fence went out, I guess.
Fence being?
I can't remember the name of the family that lived.
Cadoros.
Oh, Cadoros, you back there, yeah. It's been reasonable, I haven't heard anything like I used to when I was going by there. It's been quiet.
So it helped then, I guess?
Yeah.
So they put a fence up?
They put a fence up.
Yeah, they put like a eight-foot's plastic fence up.
I haven't been back there to make sure it's actually not in our regular way.
It's back from the railroad bed. I would, I would say it's on his property.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and it's been.
You probably have more data than I have.
Yeah, I'm guessing the distance from the trail over from where the old railroad would have been.
We have a sixty-foot right away there.
It's a pretty wide right away.
Because the railroad.
Yeah, it is back quite a bit, so I would, without having surveyed, I would say it's at least on his property. That he hasn't been a problem for a while.
Nor has he come to see us.
Nor has he had a problem with us, you know, come talk to us.
I know that there was, there was some mitigation issues.
There's been hot hailings for years going there for one figure the other.
Seems that it must have helped them.
Yeah. Well, I guess unless there's other.
I didn't know if you had a chance to go down there, but I had, so.
Yeah, I tried to go through Scottland at least once, we've checked in the trail, so yeah, I see that.
So is this an agenda? I just need to make sure.
It is number or letter?
F.
F, yeah.
Oh, okay, so Bruce York, will, do you have an email address?
E N K?
N.
K R O Y S.
K R O Y S. E N K R O Y S.
At a, at concast.net.
So there is a, we'll let the Conservation Commission know.
I've sent them an email saying that I was going to be applying for it. I did get a couple answers back on Jack, if you remember last name.
Schroder.
And Mr.
Paul Cass?
Yeah.
His chair.
Yeah, I did get an email answer back, so that they're aware of this.
Well, we'll let them know and we'll add you to the, there's a group email list. And there was also something that I had written to all members early on, so I'll send you a copy of that too. Because it points to some sites I think for people to look at and they just want to get more information on Conservation Commission's and the like. So congratulations, thank you for coming forward and, please, did you take one? All right, all right, okay.
I, I would like to, but I'm not going to.
Have a nice evening.
Okay, thank you very much.
Take care. Any other community input? All right, Hartman Head, I see two of you. Hi, George.
Good evening. Well, thank you. Worked a week missing.
All right.
Test the willpower for sure, I've heard of them, I've already practiced.
So I've been on a journey since the 12th of May, so.
Good for you.
I'm fortunate, so.
All right.
Doing better, I want to keep it down.
All right, good for you.
I got, actually, I guess we get the build from Pike?
Yes.
In our favor.
Okay.
Okay.
About two eighty-seven, she wants me to move it, I haven't seen it yet, so that's down about eight thousand.
Some dollars, right.
She sent me an email saying, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. I would like to purchase a backpack more.
Can I ask you a question before we go on to purchase orders? Has anything been put on the town website about, you know, the change to plans or what we, what we found and what we have to do?
I did, I put it on Facebook page.
On his Facebook, we didn't send out a.
But not mass, through the town, no.
Does the board mind if we do something there?
I think we should, just to keep people informed.
Yeah, okay.
I think we did direct.
Oh. Without a doubt.
Without a doubt.
But just to make people aware.
Can I ask you, there were some questions about that too. I may have sent them in an email, I don't remember. I haven't checked my email, so if you responded. So these roads were put in somewhere maybe that in eighties through the road nineties, is that, is that correct? So according to this, and you may not be able to answer this by question, according to the standards of road building at that time?
They were probably up, they were probably up to coal, you know, I mean, they were using, what they were normally using driveways today. And these roads were not stood up, you know.
But they may have been, that may have been the standard operating practice at the time?
Might have been, I mean, there was very little gravel, I mean, good gravel in these roads. And we saw it as soon as we started grinding through the roads and all of it. So that's when we made the decision, you know, we needed to add the gravel that we did to make these roads last a lot longer. We're seeing it on Sligo Road, we're seeing it, you know, the road.
I'm not surprised by our really old roads, right, that, that's not a surprise. It was the, this development, I guess.
I think things need to be inspected before they're accepted.
And we didn't, they didn't hire a paving company to do it, it was a contracting company, correct?
Well, the developments are built by contractors and then they hire a paving company to come in and pave it.
Yeah, I mean.
And if the roads are brought, the paving companies would come in and do whatever you want. They would have done this road the way it is, but they suggested we put gravel in it to gain the life of it. You know, and, and I highly agree with that because that's why that road broke up. And back in the day, if someone wants a road paved, they're going to come in and pave it. They don't, they don't have standards to go by, you know, they, they prefer doing it the right way if they're going to, you know, if someone wants, if someone's paying them to do a job.
They're going to do it.
The way you say, yeah.
You can call Gypsy Paving or you can call Quality Humpings. And, you know, that's the same with your driveway, you get what you pay for.
So they don't necessarily look and find out what is underneath, they just do what the customer tells them to do.
They come in, they're ready to pave, they're going to come in and pave. They're not going to, you know, that's where, that's where it happened.
Well, I think, I agree that we did the right thing, but.
Absolutely.
And everybody in the development did the same thing, you know, and I mean, there's been songs of praise every time I go down there for something, so.
And when do we think we might get quotes from Pike for, to finish the jobs next year? We've been talking about it.
I've been talking with Chris, I'm, I'll push him together.
I'm not.
Just so we have some ideas.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll get them well before budget time for sure.
Okay, yeah, all right, you're on.
Couple of other things I want to bring up, just so we have on the back burner. I've been talking with the chief of the fire station and that ramp in front of the station is damaged.
Okay.
He's got money in his account. I figured if the seventeen tons of hot tub is about twelve hundred seventy-five dollars, we can take that out, pay it in ourselves, at the same time, when we rent the roller, we can do it all at one time. And we're a little labor, he's going to probably, he'll be able to purchase the hot tub, but we haven't.
Is it the entire ramp or just in front?
No, just in front of them two doors that is, you know, where the bigger trucks are.
And we don't need to put anything underneath it?
Oh, we, we got gravel, we can, we're putting gravel in, oh yeah. Yeah, I mean, this not finalized when we're going to do it or whatever, you know, I just want to give you a heads up on that. Sidewalk in front of four forty Starkdale Circle is, roots have come up and people have been falling over there and it's about three and a half, about four tons of hot, about three hundred dollar thing, so we're planning on doing these things after we, you know, after we get these other projects grabbled in and stuff. Just trying to give you a heads up on a few things. Corner Locust and Main is in pretty rough shape and it's about a twenty-foot, twenty-five by forty-five foot area that's always breaking up.
Is that the sidewalk as well?
Including it, where the sidewalks meet. And I figured that's about twenty-one tons of hot tub. I didn't figure the total price because I want to, I want to talk to somebody about which, you know, if there's anything we should do to grade differently where the water is running off. And then there's a smaller section of sidewalk in front of seven oh one main that needs about a ton and a half of hot tubs to bring it up. There's a, we run into it with plow all the time when we break, you know, and there's a trip hazard there also. So we, you know, just things I want to try to do and I should have the money in patching and.
Road maintenance.
Road maintenance.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, yeah, of course you feel free during this conversation.
On the hot tub part of it, and it's only because I don't understand, okay? So is the longevity and the quality of someone doing pieces of it better or is, will it last as long as having, you know, a paving company come and do it?
We're putting the same, we're doing the same thing. We're doing identical, we're cutting it out, we're putting in new hot tub, two inches, three inches thick, whatever we need. And we're compacting it.
And you're going to get a roller compact and that would be just like having somebody else do it.
We just did the big patch on South Street and that's holding up great.
Okay, okay, so has the longevity that any other?
Yeah, this, I mean, there's no say longevity on top anymore because they, they waste, they're using the reclaimed stuff in hot tub now and at least Pike does and a few others. And oil-soaked material doesn't absorb new oil, the old stuff together, so the stuff's not lasting like it used to.
But it's better than the cold patch.
Oh, anything better, and it's half the, hot tub's half the price of cold patch. You know, I could go and patch holes every day and patch it again a couple of weeks, but if you put hot tubs in, you're done.
Right, but it doesn't matter if you're contracted out or if you do yourself, the, the cutout patchwork is going to be the same level of quality, it's going to last probably the same.
Right, and it's costing the same money you're paying. You know, it's, I'd rather have the patch with hot tub than just putting cold patch in and throwing it away. I mean, one at a time, you don't have any choice.
So, yeah, right, exactly, so are you hoping George then to bundle all of these projects and rent the roller for a day or two?
I'd like it, probably end up renting the roller for two weeks. It's not a big money thing. I'll find out for sure what the cost is. Because we're going to need the roller gravel when we do the shoulders, but I want to get all the shoulders in and then come back and roll it.
So you'll be using it constantly for that?
Oh, yeah. Right, no, I'm not going to have a hit set and, and it's a company in Dover, they, they'll deliver it and everything. We're right next to Dover, I'm reliable for them. So when the time comes, I was hoping to be able to borrow one, but we haven't got that far yet.
Keep trying. So, George, the other thing maybe before you go to purchase orders is that in my mind, the three hundred twenty-five thousand we had in our budget, which boasted in this Pike contract, which is now probably going to commit a little bit less. In my mind, some of that was going to go towards the culvert, potentially the culvert on Sligo Road. So, so I know, we had a conversation, I don't know if we had a conversation.
I know, and that was what we had before.
Okay, so maybe this is, this is a good time to.
Yeah, the Sligo Road culvert may not be an issue. Been talking with Will Aikman. And he told me the whole situation would happen down there apparently. Road Agent Kerrigan, back in the day, now on the impact, was, wanted to widen that section because he thought the slopes were too bad, so he put a piece of culvert in there so the gravel, he could extend the shoulder a little bit. He said before that there was never an issue, of course, the.
Robin has said that, that there would have never been an issue.
And, and, and it had never been an issue, so.
Reduce the flow when you put it in there?
And that reduced the flow of the water. And he told me that the culvert stuck out on the dam side of it.
Okay, before they put the pipe in?
No, after I put pipe.
Oh, after, I see, oh, the pipe did, I see.
Well, last week we went down there, he had cleared an area, we backed right down and there was a back hole and I went down and backed down about three feet in the runaway for the dam. And we couldn't find the culvert, but he told me that the week before he was standing on the cement that was there and he could look right through the culvert. I says, I think the differ with you.
Right, where did it go?
Right, it just didn't disappear. He might have been looking through the top one, and, but either way, he says, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll dig down, I'll get down in there and pull it over the hole, as much as I can till we find the culvert. Well, we went by this morning, and you can see where the water has been running through the center of, so what I wanna do is have five bodies come down, and we'll put the hose on with it and blast through that hole to see what we got. And if we can clean that out.
We may not have problems.
We may not have, with that culvert, and if we can pull that pipe out of there, then it might be the end of the whole problem.
Or make a lapse.
No, that's.
Or make a lapse, right, I mean, that's.
Well, he said that the granite was intact when he did this.
Okay, I'm sure.
There was never a problem with the granite, I mean, that's the story.
And if the granite hasn't collapsed.
He thought it was improving, I get that.
You know, if we can take this out, and the granite's still intact, we're in good shape. If the granite's collapsed, then we know we gotta do the cover.
Right.
But, and that's what I'd like to do, is to at least see what we got.
Yeah, it's worth a try.
Yeah, so that, that would put us in better situation then, to manage all of these, also these smaller projects.
Right, and that's what I'd like, before, before these other projects even come into play, I wanna make sure that it's taking. And like I was telling Suzanne this morning, I had talked to the, Ed Aaron from the engineering department, about the other culvert. And went through it now.
Right, right.
The one lane bridge.
Once we looked at the plan that they had, and I both said, why can't we just extend the existing culvert? Make up nice, you know, use prefab blocks like they do today for bridges and stuff.
Right.
And put a new prefab concrete deck over the top of it, and wipe that bridge back out, for maybe a third or less, the cost of rebuilding the whole thing.
Right.
And Aaron says.
And you'd be able to preserve.
He said, there's no reason, right, that, it wouldn't change anything.
It doesn't touch that, it just.
That's what I'm saying, for those that wanna make sure that, that doesn't get disturbed, preserve it, solves the problem.
It's just gonna extend it with like a box culvert or whatever.
Right, o- over it.
Just on, to extend it.
On the side, right, right, I get it, yeah.
You know, and you could do that for a third or even less than what they anticipated the cost of replacing this with. So that's something else we wanna look at, and, I mean, that's not something that's gonna happen this year with it. You know, we're gonna have to look at some stronger numbers at it, but hopefully we can get that at least, you know, even if we widen it ten or fifteen feet, you're gonna open up another lane, and you're gonna have that issue with people.
Right.
Both coming down the hill in the winter.
Easier to plow too, I'm sure, so.
Yeah, and the big plow just fits, it's scraping both sides when the wind plowing down, so, it's, it's tight, and, and it's dangerous, kind of coming from both directions, it's slippery, there's no place to go.
Yeah, it's, it's right in the nater.
But that's, you know, I wanted to ask him about that, and I told him, I said, I'm not an engineer, but I said, this is lasting for a long time, if that's intact, why can't we extend it?
Yeah, the only, the only, you know, one of the questions that I would ask, ask Aaron is, is always where this is located, yeah, the permitting, any kind of particular permitting, but nonetheless, the actual construction idea sounds to be a lot less involved. And the cost, just, it is, the cost, not, not that we were committed to this, but the cost of like pulling that out and putting in a box culvert, it's like in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
A lot of money.
So.
Absolutely, I mean, they make so much prefab concrete stuff today that, I mean, they're doing the bridges and everything, and this is not a class one, anyway, this is an old fine road, it's always gonna be a fine road. You know, they're not gonna be opening that up to heavy truck traffic, and why would you?
Right, but still, for purposes of trying to keep it clear in the winter time, and because it's, it's the lava too slow, so everything else.
And everybody gets it, and everything else, so you can get through that.
Yeah.
I mean, if something happens.
And it's important to the farm, because that, that was one of the reasons we did what we did to reopen it, is because it was a hardship to, to.
Well, the people on those down there too, it's not just the farm right there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, if something happens on above, between Bear Road and Wood Run, that's another axis, you, I mean, you gotta have that, that's gotta be open.
Right, but, but the farm was using it every, you know, there were workloads, but.
Oh, I know, I know.
But, I mean, that's just another, that's just another thought that we had, and, you know, after looking at it, and both had nice at that, and that's why I wanted to ask him, and he said, yeah, absolutely, there's no reason why you can't work that way. I said, then why aren't we getting these figures on upper other figures?
What I will do for George is to let Aaron know that we likely are not going to sign the task order. That the task order was to do some engineering for double one.
Right.
So, we're gonna hold off on that, and I'll bring up with him this, what we just said, and again, just, just as a conversation, not necessarily that we're ready to.
I mean, that's not nothing like, it's not, you know, that probably wouldn't happen this year anyway. The thought was, is at least look at that, I mean.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to make sure that the other one is salvageable, if it is, then we're in good shape there.
Yeah, and then there's certainly then cushion to do.
Right, yes, I mean, these are, that's the, they're still buying the patch with what we have in our river, working, but it's, it's still being reviewed here. But I don't wanna do anything till we know what we need over there.
For the culvert, yes.
I agree.
All right, any other questions on those kinds of things, all right, then you have purchase orders for us?
I would like to purchase a backpack floor.
A backpack, oh, oh, right, a big floor, yeah.
I get PO for Brentwood power equipment, list price of six forty-eight, but we can acquire it for four hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Let's put on the floor.
So we can discuss it, I'm a purchase order number.
And that'll be out of the equipment?
One four two four, for Brentwood Power Equipment for four hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Okay, so questions, comments?
So, where do you wanna take it over?
I'm at the equipment one. We had ten thousand, and we stole out five hundred something there, which, both of them.
Are there other?
Nothing other major pigment.
What about the exhaust, wasn't that coming out of there?
Exhaust fan, yeah.
Exhaust, okay.
I may purchase another exhaust fan, and we have one refrigerator there. Made by an exhaust fan in the bathroom, which we don't have yet, but we have the exhaust fan in the building now, and that's a.
So there's no other planned large purchase?
Not coming out of that one right now.
So we've, so we got the trailer already, did we get the cabinet, the, the?
The, we have explosion proof cabinets in.
Just haven't bought the small fridge, but you're looking like a, like a dorm room size thing, I would say, with a lunch.
I'd like, if I got a refrigerator, I'd like to get one nice, make this, you know, for summertime, for the, people water cold, and, you know, instead of my ice. But I mean, it's not a, that big a deal, it's a refrigerator, it's a base, anyway.
Okay.
Then I have a.
Let's, let's, let's do this one.
Okay.
So this is for when we're cleaning?
Vehicle going, or, like, we're cleaning the sidewalks off because we, we had mine, but I mean, two with, you know, two or less, two or more now with this.
Other questions or comments? All right, I'll call, who was a favor, say hi.
Hi, I will say it was, it was very nice, I saw George had the village block, you know, down park, you know, the street sweeping. And one morning I saw him out there, on the morning of street sweeping, it was you maybe that, with a backpack floer, cleaning out the stuff first, so it would all be in that, so if trucks came by, it would actually be cleaned, so. Thank you for that, George, I don't think I've ever seen that.
Yes.
It didn't get done before, something.
It's time for annual maintenance for the recycling, for the compacted stuff, and I got a quoted price of twelve hundred maybe seven fifty for the tiny recycling. I believe it's in the transfer station maintenance.
Oh, that's transfer station, yeah.
You do have it, but you haven't paid it yet?
We haven't done it yet, I wouldn't need a word.
Okay, so, can you, can you just put it on the floor, please?
Yeah, one four two three, and I took recycling for Compaqter and Baylor.
Yes.
For mental maintenance, one thousand two eighty-seven fifty.
Second.
Seventeen hundred and there's like that.
Do you see it, Frank?
I see the line, the maintenance line.
Yeah, so we did talk about this, so this must be, I guess we haven't paid it.
Oh, they, they just haven't sent us a notice, they haven't done it yet.
Oh, okay, all right, so this is what we plan, this is the annual maintenance that we're putting in.
Yeah, there's money in there for it.
Right, and, and they sent us a notice saying we haven't had IP, I figured, well, we might as well put it.
Okay, here we go, all right, any other questions on that? Ready to go, who else in favor to say hi?
Hi.
Hi. And this will be it for the year, this is.
Yes, and then, minus the ten percent, be ten percent less than that, or like that, no, no the other way.
Thank you, I'm a little rusty.
Anything else?
We had, no.
Landfill annual post closure report, what's happening with that?
There was an email about, part of it doesn't need to be filled out now, so.
We don't have to fill it out, so we can take.
But that'd be through the windows every year, the annual report, regular report.
Not this, not this post closure, so we can remove this from the.
I had crossed it out last week, I didn't get cross, thank you.
Okay.
Other things did, but I just didn't get it.
All right, and George, I'm gonna get back in touch with Stratford Rachel, because it's now July, to try to set up a road surface management session.
No, we kept it on, we kept it on, so.
Yeah, okay, very good, and there could be some money involved, that's why I wanna get in touch with them as well, to see what that might be. Okay, I think, is there anything else?
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Oh, just so you know, it's taken Thursday off, but each day, and I'm not forgiving, so, if we need this, I will be available.
Okay, so we know how to get in touch with you?
Oh, yeah, see you'll be on call, we have something to add.
All right, all right, very good, thank you, all right, okay.
George, have a good night.
Team?
Oh, here we go, all right.
I can't resist a bunch of chocolate, a little power. Okay, last week I met with the folks from Homeland Security about the March thirteenth storm that's been declared for Rockingham and Stratford County.
Oh, we remember that day.
Today I, I submitted the paperwork for, for request on behalf of the town of Rollins. So within, within ten days, we should hear from someone from the Homeland Security or PMR to start initiating the paperwork, to get some reimbursement. So, I'll keep your prices to what's going on with that.
Do you have all the information you need from us?
Does staff time get included in that, George?
I mean?
Staff time, is that included?
Yes.
Kind of like George plowing state road to keep the poles open?
Yes.
All day long?
Yeah. During the meeting, the folks from Homeland Security said that if you have any hazard mitigation plans coming up, to submit the grants, or request, request for anything during near future. They also did tell us that if you've ever had anything refused in the past, to resubmit them, because of this declaration, Stratford County, Rockingham County, those projects get a couple of extra points when it comes to the evaluation. So, you know, you're talking about the, the culvert work, you may have to on Sligo Road, but then you have the culvert work, we tried to get the grant on Sligo Road in the past, and that may change in the future as to what you're really gonna do with that project, you may wanna consider resubmitting that.
Do you have the link, I, I mean, because certainly, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be a clean race of milk, because the, the original grant was for a total. Yeah, it was to put in a box culvert, for hundreds of thousands of dollars. And only part of which the towns may, may do the rest, and that's the one that made it to the national, passed the state, went to the national, and then they had a change in how they wanted to, what they wanted to focus the money on, so it didn't fit. So that would be a case of, you know, we did pass, we weren't funded, we passed the state, not funded on the national, but we would wanna consider, it would be a stripped down project, you know, based on what George was telling us tonight, and.
Correct.
So it's always a question of, who's gonna, who's gonna fill out the application? So, I mean, do you know who we should talk to, or who we should, how we should find out more information?
Well, the initial thing we do, we submit a letter of intent to Homeland Security. And I can easily do that as the MD, just send you a couple of, of hazmat culvert projects, whatever, and then, you know, they.
What's the final deadline, do you know what the, so there's, the letter of intent is like a pretty, pretty repulsive sort of thing?
It wouldn't be until next year.
Twenty nineteen, is that right?
Yeah, sometime in the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no harm lost in, in doing that.
Just submitting the letter, and then it doesn't fall through, it doesn't fall through, but doesn't.
That would be great, because. But we might, that gives us time then to better prepare what that, what it might look like as well.
Correct.
So if you have, if you wanna do that, thank you, and you better.
Take care of that.
Just talk. At least talk.
I'll take a drink.
You can take a drink.
No, no, at the point.
I don't know, but pass it to, pass here, let's pass it to Charlie, he's gonna play. There's a new coconut one that Michael has latched on to, it's teal, the teal color.
I took one too.
Oh, even coconuts, oh, there's a lot of basil nuts, yeah, so you have to be careful.
I did mention to the, the board last week that, um, the folks who generated connection, um, were here a couple of months ago to do their, their service, they didn't locate that the, one, because of the age of the diesel generator, it's no longer supported by the company that makes the parts anymore from China. So if it breaks down tomorrow, or next week, or next year, we're gonna, we're gonna have some difficulties.
It's public on the island wire.
So they're recommending in the meantime, that we do what they consider what they call a level two cooling system service, which includes taking every single fluid that's in there now, taking it out, flushing it, replacing every single rubber gasket, rubber band, rubber hose, battery, et cetera. And then do an extensive, on the first day they're coming, do what they call a two hour load bank test on the unit, they're gonna run for two hours, hook it up to all the testing machine, all the testing equipment, make sure it's ready properly. And then we come back the following day, and then they would do another, what they call a two hour resistive load test on the machine to make sure it's working and it's peak. And in order to complete those service, they would like two thousand three hundred seventeen dollars, seventy, seventy-one cents.
Okay.
They recommend that this be done every six to seven years, and we've never, we've never done this extensive service on that, on that generator.
And how old is it?
And how old is it, that was my next question.
That came with the renovation, so we're talking eighteen years now?
Twenty, yeah.
Eighteen to nineteen years.
And we've never done the, this sort of service?
All right, well, let's put it on the floor, we can continue to ask questions, so Mike, can you put this on the floor?
Do you have a PO, a two four?
Well, I didn't do it, I think you might wanna wait just a little bit to look at it.
Oh, I see, so let you talk about it, okay, all right.
Because it's such a large expenditure, I'm not sure, you know, what you have plans, uh, for the money, this is a town hall maintenance line item at this point, so we have to find how much is left in there to see if we can squeeze this in.
Yeah.
One, maybe it's where I've had that, um, we really should do something on the generator to try to get it to last another couple of years.
So this would, this doesn't replace it, this just gives it a really good maintenance and across our categories.
That's about the rubber part.
Basically, basically, basically a major overhaul to the unit, so.
Rubber parts that haven't been looked at in eighteen years, like the rod.
Sure, just be brutal.
Brutal, this is a, an emergency shelter, right, so.
It is.
The command center.
In the command center, so.
So Mike, can you, can you take out, because I know there's something that we haven't talked about, and we really should talk about.
Town homing.
Yeah, it's under government filming, so.
Half a week, I have to read my classes.
It's porto.
Oh, yeah. She's gonna be down to. See, father, repairs the home, but she repaired town hall. Got ten thousand dollars in there. Paint, repair portico, mold remediation, various service contracts, we'll assess, we'll reduce the line by two thousand dollars.
So, we, the remediation is in, so it was in the first quarter, we don't have that in front of me, but we've done that. So, let's say, three thousand plus grants to.
Seven.
But, no, this would, let's say, six, those two projects.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so, we, so, the other maintenance contracts that we started to sign up on, started to agree to, in the doors, in garage doors, for all of our buildings, that's one that I can think of. It's always the elevator one that comes up. So, the, the issue is, you know, in my mind, the portico is this.
Right.
So this is a, this is an emergency, this is central to keeping us in business, so, I'm inclined to do this, but we should at least get quotes for, for what we're.
Yeah, I mean, the, the portico, I mean, this passed the ring before school got out, in the early summer. At the post office getting my meal before going to work one morning, there were a bunch of kids standing on the bricks where the flower boxes, kicking, karate kicking, and calling. So which I flew across the street and screamed at them, I thought it was purple, I think, and I found it back down, yeah, I did. And I really hope that they, we should get a post office there to begin with, but, so. so we might wanna think about not putting aside too much, because it was moving a little bit as they were kicking it, so I really don't wanna see the portico collapse.
Yeah, no, but we need to get quotes.
Right, no, no, we do, yeah, so it's.
So the question is, who is best prepared to, to help us get quotes, I know that we had talked to Patrick Alley at one point, in order to make sure that it was historically, that we could find somebody who was least sensitive to the historical nature.
Right, and he, it was a reasonable quote, I don't remember.
It was two, three thousand, so right now, it still fits in, but that was then.
We can email Patrick again and.
Yeah, that's something he could help us with, it worked with Richard, or, or at least. All right, but is the board amenable to perhaps next week, looking at a purchase order for, for this?
Yeah.
So, this is just, yeah. Can I ask you how much a brand new generator costs, with the size that that was?
You're probably talking sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars.
Sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars, okay.
That'd be a good idea to maintain.
In the future, if they have, I would, I would not.
I think a twenty-three hundred dollar investment is not a bad idea.
I would recommend getting, stay with the diesels, you know, at that point, you're propane.
Right, is this a diesel?
Yeah, this is a diesel. So, what kinda sort of ties into this emergency situation is, while you're away, we had an issue with the HVAC system that was.
Again.
And we actually, one of the units blew motor, and the other one had some significant filtration issues, and what happened is essentially, two of them, it froze solid, and so we, no fresh air downstairs, for a couple days, we had no, no wind condition. So they came in, they did some repairs and whatnot, when I came in today, one of the units that they, they did fix was, was frozen solid again, so I better call them to them. The repair person that came over, he's also a select board member for agreement, and he said that four units that were initially installed with the renovation.